Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Menlo Park City Council meeting, special meeting for December 16th, 2019. This time, we're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. All council members are present. I'm going to go ahead and real quickly introduce everybody. So down off the far end of the dais, we have our city attorney, Mr. Bill McClure. To his immediate right, we have our city manager, Ms. Darla Jerome Robinson. To my far left, we have council member Catherine Carlton. To my immediate left, we have Mayor Pro Tem Cecilia Taylor. To my immediate right, we have council member Betsy Nash. To her immediate right, we have council member Drew Cromes. And then down off that dais, we have our city clerk Judy Heron. Dais, excuse me. If you want to comment on any of the items on the agenda this evening, if you could go ahead and fill out a comment card and provide that to Ms. Heron so we know when to call you, that would be excellent. At this time, if everyone could go ahead and please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every hand and justice for all.
We're going to hope that we can keep public comment this evening on item E1 to a limit of 15 minutes. Reason being is that we have to get out of here for a planning commission meeting thereafter. So we're going to, I'm going to try to manage that the best we can when we get to that item this evening, but I wanted to let folks know that in advance. So we're going to go ahead and start with our consent item, consent calendar this evening. Does anyone have any items to pull from the consent calendar?
Mayor Mueller, I have public comment on items D2 and D3.
We don't, this is a special meeting, so I'm not sure we're taking public comment this evening. We are? All right, we'll go ahead and take it right now. So item, can I take, go ahead and take a public comment on item D2? Ms. Ryan Price.
I'm here today to speak both as an individual and as the Chair of the EQC. On behalf of the EQC, I wanted to thank all of you for the study session that we had last week on the Climate Action Plan and for declaring a climate emergency. As we heard from many last week, the time to address our climate, our time to address this is now. And as the EQC, we are here to offer support and advice as needed regarding how best we as Menlo Park can address climate change. I think as we saw with the REACH codes, change is possible, and Menlo Park created a thoughtful and novel way that created both a strong REACH code solution for our city and also for our community, but also supported the needs of our community. And I think, when I think about what we have looking forward in the Climate Action Plan, I believe that we can do the same thing with the Climate Action Plan and all of our efforts to address climate change and its impact on our community. I appreciate seeing this item on the work plan as a new effort for next year, and I know the EQC would as well. And I think, as stated on the agenda, I wanted to echo my thoughts that I do think that this will require a lot of collaboration across the city's staff at the department head level. And I was really excited to see that it could be prioritized in the city manager's office so that we're able to use the resources we have to focus on climate change and the impact it has on our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public speaker is on item D3. Ms. Lynn Bramlett.
I do have some concerns about the proposed community survey. As you know, the 2017 survey did generate much concern by various members of the public. And one of the concerns pertained to the questions and also the methodology. Some people felt the questions were leading toward a particular outcome, and the interviewer led the respondent toward an outcome. So I think it's important here because we are using the same firm to add an additional step, and that step would be council review of the questions. I wasn't able to attend your meeting where you discussed the matter, but I did watch the video, and I heard that there was a plan for council to review the questions. And I think this would be important because it's actually quite difficult. I do know something about surveys. I've studied it and taught it and written my own. It's actually quite difficult to have effective questions when you're kind of redesigning a survey. So I just think that would be important. I ask that you consider adding that step to the process. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other public speakers? No. Would anyone like to pull one of the items from consent calendar? Council member Nash.
I'd like to pull D2, please.
Okay. Any other items on the consent calendar to be pulled? No. All right. Can I have a motion to move items D1, D3, D4, and D5? Moved by council member Carlton. Mayor Pro Tem Taylor.
My, thank you. My question is, can we add that extra step to the community survey update? And we did have a subcommittee for it. Is it possible that the subcommittee could review it?
Why don't we just go ahead and add that as a motion? So add as a motion, a friendly amendment to council member Carlton's. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, we did have a subcommittee of council members review the questions already.
Oh, great. It's already happened. Excellent. Okay. Thank you, guys. All right. With that, we'll forget the friendly amendment. All right, we got a motion to, motion, we have a second from council member Combs. Let's go ahead and vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Item D2, council member Nash.
Actually, if we could take it after the rest of the meeting, I think that it'll be a little bit longer than I might have time for here, right now.
You think it's going to be longer than we're necessary to be here? Do you want to continue it to a different meeting?
Yes.
All right. I'm totally agreeable to that. Staff's agreeable to that. We'll go ahead and move that to item, we'll go ahead and continue item D2. With that, we're going to move on to regular business, and we're going to say goodbye to council member Combs. For the record, council member Combs is recused from this issue. Sure. Does anyone, if there, if anyone is here to provide public comment on item E1 and has not already provided a public comment card, if you could please provide them to the city clerk at this time so we can get an accurate count. Item E1 is to receive an overview of public comments on the notice of preparation and confirm the scope and content of the environmental impact report to be prepared for the proposed Willow Village mixed-use master plan development. Our principal planner, Kyle Perata, will make the presentation, and assistant city attorney, Lee Prince, will be available for questions. Mr. Perata.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Mueller and Mayor Pro Tem Taylor and members of the city council. As mentioned, I do have Lee Prince, our assistant city attorney, here to answer questions of staff after the meeting as well, or after the presentation as well. And if I could just get this up. Okay. We're in business. Okay. So just quickly here, I'd like to start off with a brief overview of the project location for the council's benefit and members of the community. So the proposed Willow Village project site is located north of US 101 along Willow Road. It's generally located at the intersection of Hamilton Avenue and Willow Road and north of the Ivy Drive, SFPUC, right away along Willow Road there. The existing site is approximately 59 acres and includes about 1 million square feet of existing buildings that comprise office, warehouse, and R&amp;D uses. And so here, for context, is the proposed site plan for the project. The proposed project would comprehensively redevelop the site with a mixed-use master plan. It does include, for the office component, 1.75 million square feet of offices proposed. That's a net increase of about 750,000 square feet over existing conditions. It also includes up to 200,000 square feet of retail in addition to the office and a hotel of up to 250 rooms. In addition to that, the housing component includes 1,735 dwelling units, and a minimum of 15% of those would be affordable units per the city's below-market-rate housing ordinance. In addition, the project site includes publicly accessible open space, most of it aggregated to an approximately four-acre publicly accessible park at the southwestern core of the site, near Mid Penn High School and Willow Road. And so, an overview of the environmental review. So the city, as the lead agency, is responsible for conducting the environmental review of the proposed project, compliant with the California Environmental Quality Act, or commonly referred to as SEQA. And Saul mentioned SEQA a number of times throughout the presentation. The environmental impact report would be prepared in accordance with SEQA, and that's required for projects that may have a significant effect on the environment. So that's physical environmental effects to such things as land, air, water, plants and animals, et cetera. As part of the SEQA process, the city released a notice of preparation, and that indicates the city's intent to prepare an EIR for the proposed project. A common, a number of components that are common to an NOP are the description of the proposed project, as proposed by the applicant, the location of the project within the city, and identifying of SEQA topic areas to be studied within that EIR for the project. As part of the NOP, it begins a 30-day comment period, which provides an opportunity for early consultation with agencies and the public prior to preparing the draft EIR. And so the environmental review timeline for the proposed project, on August 20th, the city council authorized the EIR contract with ICF International, the city's consultant, to prepare the environmental impact report for the project. As part of that, it, the EIR contract includes subconsultants prepare specific topic areas for transportation, housing, and fiscal impact as well. The council's authorization included a request for staff to bring back the project after the close of the comment period to receive an overview of the EIR scoping comments and confirm the EIR scope. And so that's what we're here for tonight. Following the relief, or the authorization of the EIR contract, city staff released the notice of preparation on September 18th. That began that 30-day comment period that I just previously mentioned. During that comment period, the planning commission on October 7th held a scoping public hearing to receive public comments on the EIR scope and also provide their own comments as a commission. And following that, the NOP period closed on October 18th. As part of that, staff received 23 written comments, approximately 14 from members of the public, four from organizations or nonprofits, and six from public agencies. And that's in addition to the recorded comments of the transcript that were received at the October 7th EIR scoping session. Those were also included in the council's packet. And so December 16th, we're here tonight for, to provide the council an opportunity to review and accept the scoping comments and provide any additional comments on the scope and content of the EIR. I will note that the formal EIR NOP comment period has closed, so this would be an opportunity for the council specifically to provide comments or feedback to staff. And the next step going forward would be the preparation of the draft EIR. And so just briefly here, the environmental impact report, this slide here identifies the components that are within the EIR. So the first one is the project description, as proposed by the project sponsor, and that sets up the framework for the environmental analysis. For this EIR, the project description does include a number of variants on the proposed project as well. The EIR includes an analysis of potentially significant environmental impacts and a discussion of ways to mitigate or avoid potentially significant environmental impacts, which will take the form of a mitigation monitoring and reporting program as part of the final EIR. The EIR also includes a discussion of alternatives to the proposed project, and so it should be noted that those alternatives really need to be developed after the analysis of the proposed project is conducted because the focus of the alternatives is to reduce or lessen potential impacts. So we need to identify what those potential impacts are first. And the EIR itself is actually two documents. There is the draft environmental impact report. When that is prepared and released, there is a comment period and a EIR, draft EIR public hearing, excuse me, at the planning commission meeting. So there's an opportunity for public comment on the draft EIR at that time. And then those comments are taken, and a response to comments document is created as part of the final EIR, which will ultimately be the document that the city council reviews. And so a summary of the NOP comments that we received. So the following topics were the most common topics within the written and oral comments. It is transportation impacts, pop and housing, population and housing, excuse me, air quality, project description components, and potential project alternatives. The majority of these comments would be appropriate for consideration in the environmental impact report itself. However, a number of other non-SEQA comments could be considered in the housing needs assessment, the fiscal impact analysis, or the land use entitlements, agreements, and permits that are required to carry out the project. And so some of the non-SEQA comments, just to provide a few of them here, were the jobs' housing balance within Menlo Park and the percentage of BMR, or below-market-rate, units within the project, or the proposed project. And so how to use the matrix. So this slide here identifies how the matrix is set up. And so you'll see the three examples that I'll kind of talk through. On the far left of each kind of topic, or each row, there's a topic, and that is transportation, pop and housing alternatives here for some examples. So what the matrix does is kind of, it groups comments by topic, and then it provides context of where that comment would be addressed. And so that is which document it may be housed in, so whether it's the environmental impact report, the housing needs assessment, the fiscal impact analysis, and then the other category would be the land use entitlements or other agreements, such as a development agreement, that could be incorporated as part of the project. In addition to the location, the matrix sets up a summary of the NOP comment and then a discussion from staff on the comment and how it fits into those specific documents. And so just a quick note, we did do this for both the transcript and the written comments that were received as part of the comment letters on the project. And so I just wanted to highlight here the next steps. So it would be continue with the environmental analysis of the proposed project. That's the current state where we're at here. Following that, in the spring or summer of 2020, staff anticipates developing a tentative project schedule, and so that schedule would outline kind of the public outreach and engagement process for the project, including the development agreement negotiation schedule, and ultimately the timeline for commission meetings and reviews of the project going forward, including the draft EIR and final EIR. Ultimately, the finally, the draft EIR is expected to be released into the fall of 2020, beginning that public comment period and commission review. And then the final EIR will be released in 2021, which would set up a potential council review and action also in 2021. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Do you guys want to proceed with questions first, or you want to take public comment? Public comment, okay to go first? Okay, great. Just get back to that screen. If you have, if you, again, if you want to submit a public comment this evening, if you could go ahead and please provide those to clerk at this time, we don't have that many public speakers, and so this should go pretty rapidly. First public speaker this evening is Crystal Leach.
My name is Crystal Leach. I'm the Associate Superintendent of Sequoia Union High School District. The district appreciates this opportunity to comment on the city's responses to the district's comments submitted regarding the scope and content of the EIR for the Willow Village Master Plan project. We appreciate that the city has represented that they will include analysis of many of the general concerns raised by the district in the draft EIR and the housing needs assessment. However, we urge the city to consider not just the general impacts of the project, but the project's specific and indirect impacts on the district, including district students, families, and staff. For example, while the city comments state that the potential for the proposed housing to generate students will be analyzed in the EIR, the city also states that an assessment of the potential impacts of population growth within the district is beyond the scope of the EIR. The city further provides that consideration generally of potential impacts of the school overcrowding is beyond the scope of the EIR. The district disagrees with these conclusions. If the project will generate a significant number of new students to the district, then the project will likely cause overcrowding in the district's existing educational facilities. This overcrowding will impact the district and community in a variety of ways, including traffic, circulation, transportation, safety, noise, and air quality. Therefore, school overcrowding is not beyond the scope of the EIR, and the direct and indirect impacts must be analyzed. In addition to considering the project's specific impacts on the district, we urge the city to consider specific mitigation measures to address these impacts. The city provided in its comments that AB 48 is relative to school bond funding and does not appear to raise an issue for study in the draft EIR. We disagree and believe that this comment indicates that the city staff does not understand the importance of AB 48. Cities commonly rely on SB 50 to conclude that payment of school impact fees should serve as complete and adequate mitigation for a project's impacts on schools. This is already a generalization of the law. If AB 48 becomes effective following the passage of the statewide bond in March of 20, it will reduce the amount of school impact fees that can be collected for multifamily housing and, in some cases, eliminate such fees altogether. We believe that the local agencies approving multifamily housing developments will be required to consider and mitigate the potential impacts on school facilities. Thus, the city and its consultants cannot thoughtfully analyze specific mitigation measures without understanding how school facilities are funded. Because AB 48 will impact how school facilities are funded, it will affect how the impacts of the project will be mitigated. Therefore, AB 48 should be considered in analyzing how the impacts of the project can be mitigated. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker this evening is Lynn Bramlett.
Sending the EIR to the draft EIR stage would be sending it along a path that would be difficult to turn back from. The ICF statement of work proposal includes Task 13, certification hearings. Their proposal assumes ultimate approval for the Willow's Village EIR. I've carefully reviewed the documents in the packet, and I would have liked even more time to respond, such as what our prior speaker just did, to the number of concerns that were basically dismissed as not being relevant. The busy holiday season further limits the public's notice of the Willow's Village EIR. And given the size of this project, the largest in Menlo Park's history, I think it warrants more effort to have an inclusive public input process. My main concerns are the inadequacy of the public notice, the inadequate incorporation of the public's prior input, the project description was inadequate, the EIR needs to examine additional elements. I'm also concerned about the objectivity of the studies that ICF plans to use in the EIR. And basically, I consider Connect Menlo inadequate as the foundation for the Willow's Village process. So in terms of public notice, you've heard from very few people, given the size of this project, you've only heard, for example, from one school district. That by itself is troubling. There are awful lot of environmental review groups that one would think would respond, Sierra Club, Save the Bay, you know, I provided a list in here. So I also suggest that council update your public notice policy, and I've attached it to my handout. You know, the fire district, for example, you know, District 1 is at serious risk of a major disaster in terms of how are those, how can emergency services get there? I'm especially mindful of this, having just completed my CERT training. I've touched on the public's prior input, the project description needed to supply more details about the transit hubs. I'd also like to see the project's impact and global climate change evaluated. Finally, the studies. Facebook is the sponsor for a number of them. In other words, they work directly, they've supplied the studies, or the company doing the work reports to Facebook. And while these may have more review, it gives the appearance of a possible conflict of interest. And finally, the inadequacy of Connect Menlo. It's relying on the program level, EIR, it frequently, I think that should be examined too, and I have some bulleted items for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Samuel Munoz, Munoz?
Good evening. Good evening, good evening, our mayor and council members. My name is Samuel Munoz, representative for the carpenters' union. I'm here on behalf of the local carpenters who cannot be here tonight because they have to drive to San Jose and San Francisco for good union jobs, and they're stuck in traffic tonight, but we will be bringing them out in future meetings. Carpenter's Union is in favor of this project. The Carpenter's Union has a strong relationship with Facebook and Signature. Jobs like Willow Village will create good jobs for local carpenters with strong wages and benefits. Local carpenters would love to work where they live. They will have the ability to spend time with their family and invest in the community. Please support Willow Village. Do not delay this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker this evening is Pamela Jones.
Good evening, mayor and council and staff. Pamela Jones, resident of the Belle Haven neighborhood in District 1 and the city of Menlo Park. I've made comments that are in the part of the NOP, but I wanted to address one other item that I now have new information on, and that's cultural and tribal resources. Page one of the matrix and page 13 details the responsibility of the archaeology report. And it looks as though that the archaeology report submitted by the project manager will be reviewed by staff itself. But I want to make sure that it includes all descendants, particularly those that are not federally recognized, that live in this area. They too must be used as resources. When Hiller Helicraft and Prologis were building there, there were no laws protecting Native Americans, so we don't know what was there. We have an idea because there are a number of reports. Under mitigation, I want to see that if it is found that it is a village, there's shale mound and/or a burial ground, that mitigation includes no build, partial build, and land preservation other than relocation. Native Americans have always been relocated. Precedents for no build can be found in the Los Angeles freeway, 405, has been halted because it was found that there are burial grounds. It has been halted, a freeway. I believe it is time that we, as a nation, we as a people, and we as a city, that we move away from the manifest destiny philosophy that decides that when we want land use, we take what we want. This time, let us look and see who lived there long before we came to this country. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Henry Riggs. And I believe that's our last speaker this evening, so if you're sitting on a comment card, got to get it in.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. You guys are working overtime, coming in here at 5:15. Henry Riggs, Cali Lane, Menlo Park. I'm here to comment as an individual, but in my history as a planning commissioner, including hearing this very subject in October. It is observed by some public speakers, we took about a dozen comments that evening, and some of us on the commission, that Connect Menlo sidestepped the entire transportation issue. We know who, we know why, but the result is that it's a difficult document to refer to, whether the EIR or particularly the results of the zoning change. The commission took this comment, considered, among other things, that projects leading up to this project for the same user were essentially up to this project for the same user were essentially unmitigated in terms of housing demand and partially mitigated in terms of traffic. We know that there was a promise to design 1,500 units, which the backer of this project never intended to actually build as a balance for their second half million square foot building, which is just recently opened. The result of this and other comments is that the planning commission asked that at least two alternatives be included in the EIR, one which has zero net housing impact and one which has zero net traffic impact. We know one of them is possible, we know the other is a matter of time, as this project is a matter of time. I think all landowners in the Connect Menlo area understand that their property really depends on workers being able to get to and from the businesses. Right now, that is just not viable, as those who are recruiting tell me. They cannot keep recruits because they discover the downside of trying to get into East Menlo Park. So, I hope that these two elements at the minimum will be included as alternatives in the EIR. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we're going to close public comment and bring it back up here. Do we have questions? Or do you guys want to move straight to comments? Who wants to go first? Mayor Protem Taylor.
Thank you. Just, I'll start off with saying thank you for putting together this matrix of comments because it made it a lot easier to read, and especially having the chart as far as what's included in the FIA or in the EIR or the Housing Needs Assessment. I'll start my question with the skulls that were found in 2012. So what mitigation measures were made then and considering that something was already found again? So I know that that's something that's going to be studied, but just looking into the future, what would be done or potentially what would be done?
So I think I can answer generally. I was involved a little bit in that. That was part of a building permit project. The contractor did stop work, did notify the most likely descendant, and I know there was a conversation and I know they worked with that individual. I don't know the extent of it though, but it wasn't part of a project that had a mitigation measure or a kind of monitoring program on it. It was a building permit and they followed a standard practice that is typically implemented when those items are found.
I'll follow up on a statement that Commissioner Riggs brought up as far as having a, what does your statement say? Zero net housing impact or zero, what was the other one? Or zero net traffic impact? I know that a few of the comments on your matrix were curious about the jobs housing imbalance and considering how much office development the city of Menlo Park has produced in the past five years, we know we've contributed to it, at least I'm willing to admit that. Why is it that the Housing Needs Assessment can't look at it specifically?
So the housing, good evening, Lee Prince. The Housing Needs Assessment looks at the impact of the particular project, the need generated by that office development, whether direct or indirect, and then it looks at the supply of housing that's available and compares the two to see if there's adequate supply of housing to meet the demand, meet the demand generated specifically by that project. And talking with the city's housing consultant who is going to be doing the HNA for this project, as well as honestly some other housing consultants I've spoken to, the jobs housing balance tends to be a broader, more regional issue or subregional issue. So looking at it in the scope of just the one project doesn't give you the full picture. So as we recommended in the staff report, you know, this might be something you could look at concurrently in the entitlement process, but separate and apart from, from the HNA for the project.
One, one thing that I'd like to say is that, for me, I look at what the city of Menlo Park is responsible for. So I'm looking at the needs of the city, not necessarily the region. And so knowing that we exacerbated it and the last project didn't mitigate housing, so moving forward into another project, what more can be done? And I don't think the Housing Needs Assessment is going far enough. And I would like to know what measures we can take from here as the elected officials to take it a little further.
I mean, certainly as described in the staff report, you know, you do have the potential to, in the, I believe it's 2020 work program, to decide that you want to take a look at that jobs housing balance and do a study that's a little bit more broad. Certainly if the HNA for this project shows that the housing demand generated by the project doesn't meet, isn't satisfied by the housing that's available, there's certainly mitigation measures that can be imposed on a project level basis. And then certainly as part of your, I mean, this is a project that has a development agreement attached to it, and certainly you can consider as the decision maker, you know, what elements of the jobs housing balance you would consider as you negotiate through that process.
I'll just add a comment. It will be interesting in 2021, because I think at that point, and I could be wrong, the regional needs allocation numbers for the region will have come down, as well as the, the regional needs allocation numbers will have come down from Sacramento and then through A-BAG, and then we'll also have a better understanding too of what that $4 billion in private money from, that's been committed by the local companies, where that money's going. So, I say that, I say that out loud so the public can hear that. There's a lot, life in this, in public service is not in a snapshot moment. Councilmember Carlton?
So in the previous entire time I've been on council, pretty much we've been dealing with Facebook building X, Y, and Z. And we have been told consistently, constantly through the years, oh, well, don't worry, we know we're building all these office space, housing's coming. Oh, don't worry, we know, you know, I personally have been on the bandwagon for grocery stores, grocery stores is coming. We've been told this is coming, this is coming. I'm delighted that it's finally here, but it's not okay, that it's making it worse. Minimally, this should be balanced, what we're building, because we've been promised this. This is something that we've been discussing as they built the second campus, as they built the third campus, this has been discussed. And now I'm being told, well, you wanted the housing and the amenities, pharmacy, what have you, and now we have to build all this extra office space to make this happen. And it just does not make me happy. This is not what we have set up to be doing. And so when we look at the page that says background and proposed project, under the two variants of housing, it has, I'm just reading from this, an increase in housing units up to a maximum of 2,000 homes. And then the second option is a decrease in housing to a minimum of 1,500 homes. I would like to see it studied because we all know, so, Mr. McClure, as I have been told before, just to clarify, we can't not do an EIR. When someone puts it across the desk, we've had previous people say, oh, no, you shouldn't do this EIR now. We have to do an EIR when someone puts it through. This is our obligation as a city. But when we're scoping this, we need to make sure that what we scope is what can actually potentially be, be built. And usually we scope to the worst case scenario so that we can effectively say, well, this is worst case scenario or least case. So I would like to see it scoped for the housing for, let's just, just for kicks, maximum housing is the housing that makes it balance as opposed as defined by A-BAG. Let's have that as the maximum studied. Now, that doesn't mean it's going to be built because we know there's a process that we go through, but that certainly should be outlined as a potential, just for us to have that on paper. Does that make sense? Is, am I, are we able to pull those numbers and include that in the study? As long as we're scoping this, let's scope it for what is potential.
So I don't know that we have the A-BAG formula in terms of the number.
I had it five years ago, did it change?
Well, they have a black box that determines what our allocation is.
No, 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 but for jobs housing balance, we do.
Oh, I, I don't know. I personally don't know what that number is. The, the answer is yes, you can direct as part of the alternative analysis, additional housing or balanced housing, which is, I kind of think what Henry Riggs was talking about, essentially where the housing and office would balance each other.
Yes, that's what I'm talking about too. And if we don't have it, five years ago, I called A-BAG and it took me talking to maybe four or five people, but I got the, the formula. So it at least used to be out there. I assume it's still available for us to look into. And when we look at office space, we're looking at approximately 1.75 million square foot of office space. Why not have a up and down scale for that as well? Because if we're going to make this balance, they're, they're both ends of that scale. I just want to make sure that we have legal wiggle room for what is scoped on the EIR so that we can have this discussion as it comes forward and as we can have this discussion as the, the next round of, of numbers comes out. Now, I'll have some more questions, but I'll, I'll let my colleague ask some questions while I move forward.
So I guess, along, staying with the jobs housing and the housing needs assessment, I went back to the Menlo Park Facebook Campus Project Housing Needs Assessment from November 2011, and I was not able to go through the entire document, so perhaps there's more there than I saw. But the net new housing needed from the east campus and the west campus at that time was 3,257 new housing units. And so what I'm wondering, we had zero units built from that, how does that figure into what we're doing now? And how do we, when we're going forward, have any assurance that we will be able to have an option to net out the jobs housing? And I guess my other piece of that, well, actually, let me leave it at that.
Okay. So, so I'll, I'll do my best to answer that piece and then we can move on to the next piece. And I am, I apologize, I am going from memory here. You know, I was involved with that project and processing through the entitlements. And so if I recall correctly, you, the HNA looked at the number of households that would be generated by the new workers that would come with the project. And then if you take a look at that, it's not a one-to-one, so for every worker, you often have more than one worker per household. So then the number is a little bit smaller than the total number of jobs created. And then the HNA does an analysis to figure out the percentage. So we have, I believe it's census data that figures out the percentage of workers employed who both live and work in Menlo Park. And I believe that the HNA there bracketed the analysis between what's common for live and work in Menlo Park, as well as what was anticipated to be specific for Facebook, because they have a little bit of a different demographic than average. And I believe those brackets were like seven and a half percent to 10 to four, Kyle is helping me, he pulled it up, to 4.9%. Do you want to read them, the numbers of housing that were needed?
Sure. So, so yeah, the, the, once you break down the census data and the actual commute share that was provided by Facebook, based on their employee demographics, you're looking at on a high scale or high end, excuse me, 276 total units necessary within Menlo Park. That's at the 7.6% census data rate for live, work in Menlo Park, and 175 units at the 4.8% or the lower estimate based on more specific data for Facebook as a user.
So my understanding is that that number is the number of people who would be assumed to live in Menlo Park? I guess I have two questions about that. One is, it seems to me that many more people would like to if there was housing available than four to 7%. The other piece of it is, do other jurisdictions ever hear about the other 93% of the housing needs that they're supposed to accommodate? And conversely, when Google builds in Mountain View, do we hear about the percentage of housing that we're expected to take on? And isn't that actually how we end up in the regional housing needs, housing jobs imbalance?
So relative to the first part of your question, and then I'll let Kyle answer the second part, you know, I have been having conversations with our housing needs consultant to talk about just that very issue. Like how do we figure out, you know, obviously there's a bracket based on information that we know based on how many people can and do live and, live and work in Menlo Park. But is there a way to take into consideration the issue of, well, if there were more housing available, would that percentage increase? And so I don't have a great answer for you tonight, but just I want you to know that we are having those conversations with the consultant to make sure that as we process this analysis, that those things are considered.
And so I think for the last component of that question, it's also a little difficult to, to give a comprehensive answer because it's kind of unknown. A lot of that job growth that you're talking about does factor into the regional housing needs allocation, which then does fact, does kind of trickle down to the allocation in Menlo Park and East Palo Alto and San Mateo, Revet City, so the communities in the area. But ultimately, in terms of where that number aligns, we have to go back to A-BAG.
So I guess, one question is, if Facebook is the employer, is the top employer in Menlo Park right now, according to our latest CAFRA report and for many before, and they currently have 78% of the employees in Menlo Park, does that in any way play into this in the Housing Needs Assessment and the jobs housing imbalance being able to be studied in, as part of the EIR?
So, I mean, that's a difficult question. So when you're looking at the impacts of the project itself in the EIR, you're looking at it from existing conditions, and then you're looking at the impact that the project would have above and beyond existing conditions. So those 78% of employees that you're talking about that they have, those, those are part of existing conditions. So whether they live here or they live in San Francisco or they live somewhere else, I mean, really, you're not going to be looking, I mean, they're part of the analysis, right? Because they are the baseline and then you're looking cumulatively out over time, but you, you're not really looking backwards to figure out how, the way things are today has impacted, you know, the housing need and the jobs housing balance. I mean, I think, again, those are, those are broader issues that understandably you want answers to, but, but are outside the scope of, of this EIR.
We talk about a landscaped area over on the side. One thing, I don't, I don't know about my colleagues, but I hear a lot about lack of soccer fields, not because more people are playing soccer, because more people are playing field hockey and lacrosse and other sports that require soccer fields, and there's a real pinch there. And so I think it's, with that piece of land, it would be great to have a field available there for people. And I see it's kind of indicated on the, the document that it would be for sports. That being true, as this moves forward, it would be great to pass through the Parks and Rec Committee to let them eyeball it. I think we did the same when I was in Parks and Rec forever ago with, with similar projects. But just wanted to make sure that that didn't get forgotten as it moves forward. But I just wanted to make sure that that didn't get forgotten as it moves forward, because it is important. And I remember hearing from people within Bell Haven and that area, adults wanting to play more soccer as well. And it would be wonderful to have more fields available where they can just walk over or ride their bikes over and take advantage of that. And then my other question was, it talks about the city will need to update its guidelines to identify an impact threshold for vehicle miles traveled. When would that be done?
So, let me hold that one for a second. Let me start with your questions from the previous comments, and then I'll work through them, and we'll end up with the vehicle miles traveled threshold. So going back to some of the potential, I think you were identifying alternatives, I just wanted to kind of respond to that and let you know that we will consider that and take that into account as we're developing alternatives based on those potential impacts that we find for alternatives to the project that may reduce those impacts. And then with regard to the program of the park, we do expect to identify a process for programming and a public outreach process for that. And so I think, so thank you for your comment. We'll definitely determine the appropriateness of the Parks and Rec Commission, when that would be in terms of that park.
As an example, I remember that two of the groups were Latino men who don't speak English very well. So make sure that we do have good outreach as they move forward on that.
Absolutely. Thank you. And with regard to vehicle miles traveled, I know the council is tentatively holding a study session on January 14th regarding that topic, so we'll provide more context on that then. But we would need to adopt a threshold, you know, prior to July 1 of 2020, when that threshold of significance changes from level of service or delay at intersections to vehicle miles traveled distance that cars are going to and from.
That's what I was concerned about. Okay, so it needs to be done by then. Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Okay. So I just wanted to double check. And I'm saying, I'm asking the question so the public can hear it. Was the fire district, Atherton, East Palo Alto all notified at the NOP period?
Yes, they were.
Okay. So there is one thing that I've made a, I made a commitment early on in this process regarding that, was that we would assess the impact to the school districts. So the comments that we heard from Sequoia Union High School tonight, I want to know how we can address those, if that's something that can be addressed through the EIR process, because it's something, look, Menlo-Atherton is, Menlo-Atherton High School's at its limit. And so we have to figure out, within the mitigation process of this project, how that's dealt with. That's something, when people move into Menlo Park, they move into Menlo Park, they expect us to protect the school districts and improve our school districts. I think that's, everyone has that expectation, no matter where they live. So, how do we deal with that?
So, I see you looking at Bill, but I'll take the first foray into answering that question. So, the project, the EIR will look at the number of students generated or anticipated to be generated by the project. I know the commenter spoke about, you know, impact on students, family and staff, similar to the housing imbalance. Like, those are social impacts that aren't considered. However, to the extent that the project would result in the need to construct additional school facilities to address overcrowding issues, then the EIR will look at that need to construct and will analyze that impact on the environment. So there is some analysis in there that's relative to, you know, what impact does the project have on the school district and how is that addressed?
Is there something that we need to do tonight in order to specifically call that out in a way that it's?
I mean, you can just make the request that we make sure that we're including some of the additional comments, and it may require some additional conversations with the school district to understand maybe something we or our consultants don't understand, so that we get sufficient facts to provide to the consultant as part of the environmental analysis. But providing the direction that the council wants to make sure that those impacts are evaluated as part of the EIR is enough direction.
Is everybody in agreement on that?
Yeah. Can I have a follow-up question?
Well, just a follow-up question, sure, but can we be in agreement that we'll look at those? I just want to get, for all school districts?
Yes, absolutely. It should be the city, yes.
I said all school districts. So, yes. Great.
Putting it a bookmark, making sure we legally can, but putting it a bookmark. I agree with the previous speaker's comment that sometimes impact fees just don't cut it over the long term. And we have negotiated similar long-term mitigations in the development agreement. As these things go, I probably won't even be here when we're doing the development agreement, so I'm throwing it in there so that it's recorded, that I would like to see us not just have an impact fee, I would like to see us, as we negotiate the development agreement, to have further, a further view of how the schools can be supported in the long term.
I'd like to move over to the transportation end of things. And in the Hexagon Transportation Impact Analysis, there are 49 key intersections, and I'm wondering why none of the intersections are west of Middlefield Road? And, well, I guess what I should say is, if it makes sense, could we please include them?
So we can definitely look into that. I know as part of the project, we've looked at trip distribution. We're not quite there yet for this project, but looking at previous Facebook projects, you'll see that, I think Middlefield is the extent of the intersection analysis, just because at that point, trips do start to kind of disperse out away from being kind of funneled through intersections and having impacts. But certainly, we can definitely look at that list again and see if it makes sense to add any.
Okay. Intuitively, it doesn't make sense. Just, so I'd love to know if we do not study any intersections specifically west of Middlefield, I'd love to hear the rationale, please. Thank you. And then, as you were saying, we're looking at intersections. Throughout the document, it looks at qualitative measures and specifically says, it's looking at qualitative measures in the transportation area, as opposed to quantitative measures. And there seems to be a strong emphasis on level of service and evaluation of vehicle queuing. And given that we're now moving to VMT, the vehicle miles traveled, is what's in the document sufficient to evaluate VMT? It seems very heavy on the level of service. And then beyond that, we've just been having some excellent, robust conversations about climate change, and transportation is the major contributor to greenhouse gas emissions. We need to get serious about reducing VMT and not just looking at the level of service. And while we all feel the impacts of the traffic congestion, I'm concerned that we're not, that we're putting a lot of emphasis on the level of service and that I don't see, in the staff report, it definitely called out VMT. In the Hexagon report, I didn't see it. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I was looking for a comment regarding whether that, do I have the right perception and what will happen for that? Thank you. Oh, hi Nikki. Thanks.
So I'll start, and then I'll let Nikki pick up, where I am no longer the expert. So, the analysis that Hexagon has put together, or the scope for the analysis, does include both LOS, level of service, and vehicle miles traveled VMT. The reason for that is, while we're moving to VMT as the threshold here, we still have LOS as a land use component, because we do have general plan policies regarding certain level of service, operating levels of service at intersections. So the analysis does cover both and would be sufficient for the VMT analysis for this project. With regard to the qualitative statement, the analysis does do a quantitative analysis for the actual project and the variance and including the alternatives, where I think the qualitative discussion is in the scope is regarding to alternatives, not the cumulative and the variance in the project itself. Rather, the alternatives analysis would be more qualitative than quantitative there.
Yeah, thank you, Kyle. Nikki Nagai, interim Public Works Director, and then that's a perfect overview, I'll highlight just a couple of things. One is the timing of the scope of work that Hexagon prepared. It was dated in late June, and so at that point in time, we had envisioned that the transportation analysis would include both level of service as a SEQA impact, as well as disclosing VMT impacts. And since that time, as we're anticipating the release of the draft EIR occurring after July 1 of 2020, when state law changes, we will need to reassess how the information's presented. All the analysis will still be completed, but VMT will be the primary SEQA impact as required by new state regulations. And then level of service will be presented for information in the SEQA document, and then, as Kyle described, as part of our consistency review with the city's land use policies. And so it will still be in the document, but won't be considered a SEQA impact in the same way as it was when Hexagon developed the scope back in June. The emphasis on congestion and queuing is something that we've incorporated into the scope in order to make sure that the, particularly the impacts on Willow Road are captured correctly. And so that's one thing that we had emphasized as we were working with Hexagon on the draft scope. But there's quantitative analysis everywhere that the city has impact thresholds defined. And so that would be level of service, that would potentially be, as you develop policies and guidance on impact thresholds for VMT, so mentioned the study session in January, those analyses will all be quantitative in nature. Things that are not defined in the city's impact thresholds are where we look at qualitative analyses. And then, as Kyle described, the alternatives are typically done on a qualitative basis to show where we can look at alternatives that could potentially reduce impacts over what the defined project includes. So hopefully, that just covers a little bit more detail.
Thank you. Could you just have a staff member just reread the Hexagon report and just make sure that it makes sense, given our new reality? Thanks.
Okay. Councilmember Carlton?
To follow up on Councilmember Nash, thank you, those are very good questions. I remember years ago, there was a, probably from an EIR, from something else we did, I don't remember where this study came from, but it talked about how the vast majority, not vast majority, I think it was like 60 something percent, 70% of the traffic on Willow was passed through traffic. Now, if it's passing through, let's think of where it's going to come from. It's probably going to come from Ravenswood as people pass and go back down, as well as Palo Alto. But there's going to be a big impact on Ravenswood as well. As we move forward on this, is it possible to also look at Ravenswood? No. I mean, up Ravenswood, away from Middlefield is what I'm talking about.
So I think there are a couple.
Or even worse, further up Willow on the other side, where I'm seeing more and more cars cut around the park and go down through the neighborhoods.
So the traffic, so I'm presuming you're looking back at the need to study intersections farther west than Middlefield. So I think as part of the.
Further west of El Camino would be more accurate.
Okay. It's something we can definitely request Hexagon look at, but one thing that we'll need to keep in mind as we look at the intersection level of service review, is that as it's no longer a SEQA impact, it's then a review of the consistency with the city's general plan policies. And so the assessment of mitigation measures is going to look different as it's no longer a SEQA impact. And so that's something that we'll need to work through as we transition under the new state law paradigms going forward. So we can certainly look at the trip distribution and make sure that we have all the intersections that may be impacted, just how those impacts are disclosed in the document is going to look a little different as we go forward.
Okay, that's good for me to know, but I want to make sure I understand what you're saying. So you're saying that SEQA only takes it to Middlefield, not, that's not how we're defining it?
SEQA, starting July 1 of next year, SEQA won't consider level of service at all, with the exception of consistency with the city's general plan policies.
But in terms of areas that we study, who defines how far out we go? Is that something that we define, or is that something defined by SEQA?
We define, but consistent with state SEQA law.
So, is there a reason why we couldn't go to El Camino?
No, we can go further, but the mitigation measures, if we find what would traditionally have been disclosed as an impact, it may show up differently in the document than what you would have seen six months ago.
Okay. And then I did, thank you for reminding me, I did also notice when I was reading through all the things that are planned for with the garage and all this, I did not see a specific area for bicycles. And it's probably there, at least in someone's mind, but it's good to have it called out, that this is a covered area, this is a specific area, to make it easier, safer for people to ride bicycles.
As part of the proposed site plan specifically?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because the easier, nicer, cushier the bicycle places, hopefully, it inspires people more. As I understand, we cannot have trip caps because it's mixed use. So as, everything we can do to make it easier for people to make other choices for transportation, the better.
Yeah, by looking at bike parking is typically part of the site plan review process. The plans today may be too high-level and not granular enough yet to identify the specific bike parking locations, but that would certainly be part of a review of any future project plan sets as they come in.
Okay. I just noticed they listed out a lot of things in detail, but that wasn't there. I just wanted to call that out.
If I can add to that, so I just want to, there was a statement about the trip cap. I just want to identify that that's a policy decision for the council. So a trip cap could be applied to the project. I just want to make sure that that is.
Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate it.
When's that decision made?
Yeah, it would be part of the entitlement review process. It's, it would be part of the review that would happen typically around the release of the draft EIR and beyond that, if it's incorporated into things like the conditional development permit, potentially development agreement. It could also be a potential mitigation measure, so depending on what impacts are found, a trip cap could be used to mitigate that. You know, we do have trip caps at other campuses that Facebook occupies, also trip caps at other sites as well. So that could be applied as a mitigation measure, or front-loaded, or applied retroactively through a land use entitlement process. Thank you.
So I'm going to ask my colleagues, we're going to let Mayor Protem Taylor ask some questions.
Thank you, Mayor Mueller. My question along the lines of transportation, the route that the company's bus line shuttle service will be using, would that be a part of the study with traffic? And that could be from 280 to 101 to Bayfront.
Yeah, so we do typically request a site plan that shows the shuttle tram, all the transit routes that the employer is using to get to and from the site. And then as part of the environmental review, the consultant, in this case Hexagon, also looks at public transit service and makes an assessment of whether existing transit is sufficient to meet the demand of the proposed development as well. So you'll see both of those as part of the evaluation going forward.
Okay. I have two more questions. One is about the housing needs assessment, and the other, I'll start with the second question. As far as the guiding principles, citywide equity, was wondering, are there, are any of the consultants using our guiding principles as a part of their process? And if so, how are they measuring it?
So, the guiding principles were the overarching umbrella that was used to generate the goals, policies and programs that are in the general plan that were included in the land use element. So certainly, when the EIR looks at consistency with the general plans, goals, policies and programs, it will be looking at whether or not the project conforms to those. And some of those, and I apologize for not remembering the exact language, but some of them talk about specific access to. language, but some of them talk about specific access to healthcare or food, like, they're all built into our general plan land use section. And so the EIR and the consultants will consider whether the proposed project meets or satisfies those goals, policies, and programs.
So will there be something in place to measure, like some way to measure it? So do we have something that we use to measure to see if we're meeting that goal of citywide equity?
I'm looking at Kyle, but I can't recall off the top of my head a quantitative way that we would have built into the land use element to look at citywide equity. I think those goals, policies, and programs are more qualitative, if you will, given they're looking at quality of life. I don't believe there's a metric associated.
Thank you. My last question is, I'd like to see some information included with the housing needs assessment. One is a recent research project done by Kate Bradshaw called Uneven Ground that talks about land use policy and also food deserts in Menlo Park. The second is, Samhale County has a healthy Samhale program where they've done a profile on the city of Menlo Park. I'd love to see that being utilized in this. And I'm suggesting it because it's information already gathered, so it's free. Thank you.
Yeah, we can certainly ask our consultants to take a look at those.
Kyle, do you have any more questions tonight? Okay. Yep, Councilmember Nash?
Hi, I have two last questions, please, or comments. One is on the section aesthetics under analyze, it says that it will analyze lighting and glare impacts created by the proposed buildings, focusing on motorists on Bayfront Expressway and residents of the Bellhaven neighborhood. Could we also include East Palo Alto neighbors?
Certainly.
And also, it seems that we might want to look at wildlife, although perhaps that comes in the biology, but it wasn't specifically called out in biology.
Okay, yeah, we'll certainly look at wildlife as well.
Thank you. And then, the other piece is about Dunbarton Rail. In the EIR, it says that the EIR scope, city council authorized, includes a quantitative analysis of Dunbarton Rail, but that the transportation consultant is currently scoped to do a qualitative analysis. Why this discrepancy when we...
So I believe the quantitative analysis, and this is what, so the transportation consultant was at the planning commission meeting in October, I think, when we were here. And they confirmed that they will be studying Dunbarton Rail quantitatively with and without the project in the long term. I think the timeline for Dunbarton Rail to come online isn't in the near term for when the project will be, but they are going to look at it quantitatively in the long term. The qualitative piece comes in when we're looking at alternatives. A number of commenters requested that the EIR examine the VMT quantitatively with respect to alternatives, and they are not currently scoped to do that relative to alternatives.
Does it make sense to do it that way?
So I'll start. I mean, so generally, alternatives are analyzed qualitatively. They're not done at the same level of detail that the project is done at. So it's standard. Certainly, if you would like the consultant to look at VMT quantitatively for the alternatives, I mean, that's something we can add to the scope of their contract.
I mean, perhaps we can talk to staff, does not have to be right now, but I'd love to have the experts and professional staff make that decision, whether, what would be best.
Yeah, I mean, certainly we can have our transportation folks talk about if it would be a good idea or ideal to do that quantitative analysis for alternatives. And there certainly would be a significant additional cost. I mean, that's something we could have Hexagon scope for us to know what the extra cost would be in looking at that issue.
Can I make a suggestion on that?
Yeah.
That we give it to the subcommittee to meet with staff and the city attorney on and then make a decision and report back on. Does that work? Good. No problem. With that, any other questions? Nope. Okay. Then if I can have, I think we're done then, so if I can have a motion to go ahead to receive an overview of the public comments on the notice of preparation and confirm the scope and content of the environmental impact report to be prepared for the proposed Willow Village mixed-use master plan development. Need a motion? Got a motion from Councilmember Nash. Can we have a second? A second from Mayor Protem Taylor. Let's go ahead and vote.
The motion passes with Councilmember Combs recused.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Our next item on the agenda this evening are informational items. There are no staff reports. Does anyone have any questions on the informational items?
I do have public comment on both, one on each.
One on each, if you can go ahead and pull them up. Okay, public comment on item F1, update on the City Council Ad Hoc Subcommittee and City Council Procedure Updates. Ms. Bramlett?
Hello again. The topic proposed adding a Sunshine Calendar procedure for the city council consideration in January, and that would be something noting who they met with. And the example reference would be from the city of San Jose. I do want to point out, as you, I think you know, the San Jose mayor is a full-time job. I'm not sure if the council members are full-time too, but they could be. That would make the reporting easier. I am concerned that the Sunshine Calendar, although certainly a noble idea, requirement could be burdensome for part-time council members. I also ask that council consider broader reforms related to transparency, ethics, you know, in general promoting confidence, the public's confidence, that decisions are being made for the public good and not for other reasons. So I want to suggest that council consider a broader package such as an employee council code of ethics, maybe a more robust conflict of interest policy, even a value statement. I've done, I've been interested in this topic for some time and actually done quite a bit of looking into it. And it just seems a number of cities have more of, instead of a prescriptive approach, it's more based on aspirational values. My understanding is that that's considered a more effective long-term policy, though these other, you know, aspects can be helpful. So I'd like to suggest that maybe you take this up again when you have your new city attorney in place and consider it more holistically. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we're going to go ahead and move on to item F2. I'm sorry, are there any questions on item F1, staff? No. Moving on to item F2, City Council Agenda Topics, January 2020 to February 2020. We have public speaker, Ms. Bramlett.
Okay, this will be brief. So I have read Patty Fry, one of the residents, has suggested that these be tied to your major goals. And I think that's a great idea. Earlier, you had your work plan, transportation, you had a number of them. So if we could have, add a column where we have that major goals in the topics, and then, I just think it would be helpful toward kind of a mission-driven city, if you will. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on item F2 from anyone? Councilmember Nash?
This is actually for City Manager Jerome Robinson, probably. And that's, my understanding is, well, I don't see the Complete Streets Commission update on here, although my understanding is it's coming up in January. And I don't know if it needs to go on.
I can answer that. It was added to the tentative after this item was already published.
Great, okay. No other questions, we'll move on from item F2, City Manager's Report.
Mayor Mueller, I would like to report out that in closed session, the council did take action tonight to appoint a subcommittee of Mayor Mueller and Councilmember Drew Combs on the city attorney recruitment.
Thank you. City Councilmember Reports. No, with that, for the last time in 2019, during the meeting.